I'd like to call the Harper Creek Board of Education, regular meeting for Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by long silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Chair calls for motion at the Harper Creek Board of Education, appoint Aaron Alworth to serve as the Secretary for the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Education meeting.
Senator.
It's been moved by Mr. Myers, supported by Dr. Borders, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Alworth.
Yes.
Dr. Borders.
Yeah.
Mr. Jason Smith is absent. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Martin is absent, and Mr. Bass, I vote yes. Motion carries by zero. And with that being said, Madam Secretary, please call.
Aaron Alworth is present. President will ask?
I am present.
Dr. Borders?
Proven.
Tim Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Don Myers?
Here.
Student Representative Allison Reed?
Here.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jason Smith?
We have a call.
All right, thank you for that. And Mr. Ridgeway, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
I do not have any modifications to the agenda.
All right, thank you for that. And we will start out with Communications, and we'll start with President's remarks. I'd like to welcome all in attendance and those live streaming the meeting. We're glad you can join us tonight. A special thank you to our winner sports coaches for important role they play in the education of our children. Not only do they instill collaboration and leadership skills, they are, there's a correlation between improved academic grades and extra participation, plus it's a great way to bring community together and build school pride. Take a moment, thank the coach. Thank you to all of our coaches. They are the force behind leading our children. Our middle school bands and players are entering competition season and will host concerts to perform their work. Music is an important part of social and intellectual development, and we appreciate that time and talent of music directors who enrich our education programs. Come out and support them by attending an upcoming concert. Check the district website calendar for dates and times, or come to a basketball game where the pep band has been playing, I believe.
Is it?
Yeah, so. And I'm going to recognize Mr. Barry Smith, our Vice President, with a quick update on a, on Mr. Ridgeway.
Yeah, on January twenty-fourth, in a special board meeting, we conducted the annual evaluation of our superintendent, Mr. Ridgeway. We rated him as highly effective, and the Board of Education agreed on a statement that will be embedded in Rob's evaluation, and I wanted to read that Board of Education statement publicly tonight. Superintendent Ridgeway has been an exemplary leader for Harper Creek Community Schools since his hire in two thousand and fifteen. Over the last two years, those leadership skills have been tested, and through this time, Mr. Ridgeway has established himself as the best superintendent in the area. He leads through words and deeds, and continues to set a great example of servant leadership for our students, staff, board, and the community. This board has rated him as highly effective, and we have the utmost confidence in his ability to lead Harper Creek Community Schools. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Ridgeway, Administration.
Sure. I do appreciate the kind words, and I do want everyone to know in the audience and our staff, really, they're the ones that are doing the work on the, you know, in the trenches, and I do appreciate everything they do, and a lot of times they make me look good. So, a couple of things that I want to report on. Number one, we did an ESAR three survey to our community, students, parents, and staff, and we closed that survey today, and so we're going to go through and dig deep into SB budget ESARs, or continued budget ESARs for next year, this year, next year. Most of ESRS three will be spent next year, the majority of them will be. Do some highlights, we had asked people to rank order some of the things that were potential spending items, and here's some, this, antecdotally, to start with, improved HVAC system was ranked fairly high, reduced class sizes was ranked high, tech devices connectivity was also ranked high, additional sultry emotional support, and then high-quality teaching materials were probably rounded out the top five or so. We also asked people to write in if they would like to say anything additional that we didn't include within the rankings that we had, and so as an administrative team, we'll go through that, and then we will eventually come back to the board with our plan moving forward with the ESRS three money in total. Now, we have talked a little bit about certain things we've already spent with ESRS, ESRS one and ESRS two, but ESRS three had a clause where you had to get meaningful input, so then we also met with our employee groups in person last week and asked for their input, and so they are going to ensure that they get input from each of their, well, from each of their groups are going to come back and hand us what their thought processes are. So is there something different maintenance, or in the secretary group, or in the teacher group, or in the parent group that we are thinking about? We want to make sure we put every need out there. Another thing, at the last meeting, we heard a lot about substitute teachers and the shortage, and I am proud to say that the staff really came together since that meeting. One of the biggest concerns was our elementary teachers not getting planning time because they were, you know, there was not a teacher there, so they had to work during their planning time with their kids, and so one of the biggest things that happened was our paraprofessionals for about a two-week period of time stepped up and went into the classroom. It's a new clause within legislation in Michigan where they opened up substitute teaching, so that helped for a bit, and during that same time, our HR Director, Jamie Chapman, went in and found six people that were already had put in applications in our countywide system. She called all of them, and then we ended up hiring, I believe, two of them, and we have a third one that is ready to hire in our group. And with the COVID numbers going down, which has been a positive, we haven't had the, as much need, but because we now have ten district subs, we have, we have plenty of people to cover all of our classrooms. So we're no longer having unfilled classrooms. When I say unfilled, they were, they would get filled by teachers working their planning periods, and you know, that is really something that's, you know, they do a great job with it, but it's hard because you never get a chance to plan, and then you have to do it after school, your day gets disrupted, so I think it's a better situation. So I'm really proud of our entire staff for coming together and the work they did. And then finally, I don't want to spend too much time on this, I did update the board, but the Emmett Township is looking at starting a DDA, a downtown development area. It would be along Michigan Avenue from the casino, and then it turns into Columbia Avenue, or turns to Columbia Avenue, two ninety-four. So most of the properties along that route would be the DDA, and what it does is it basically, they're able to capture taxes. It's not a tax increase, I want to make sure I'm really clear on that, they were very clear, it's not an increase, but what happens is they set the tax base at whatever level it would be at this year, and then next year, taxes in Michigan go, property taxes go up by either three percent, or there's, there's some state thing that it can only go to five, so there's a, between three and five percent. So they would capture that three to five percent every year, and then use that money for the DDA. So a question is, well, the tax, property tax goes to people like us in school, ISD, Willard Library, lots of different places, and so each of the entities has the opportunity to say yes or no they want to participate. So schools are exempt, according to the attorney from the, from the township, which is, which is good, but like Willard Library would say yes or no if they were going to allow that the extra tax to be captured. So any increase, if they said, go ahead and capture it, they wouldn't get the increases. So I'm, my only concern is the school district, is I want to ensure that that is true, that the school is exempt, because, you know, it would, it would definitely cause a little bit harm if we didn't see the increase in taxes each year. There's another piece of tax, I can't remember what it's called off the top of my head, but the six percent that is paid on property tax that goes for education in the state of Michigan, all that money goes into the state, that is not affected either. I believe that the main project that they would like to do is the sewer and water project, to finish that up, they're trying to, trying to be able creatively find funds for that project. I think most of us know that the sewer line is at capacity currently, and they need to do some things, and then the state has said they have to do a loop of the water. So right now, the water goes all the way out Michigan Avenue to the casino, but they want to have a second line go out there, so there's a whole loop, and that would be a better situation for water. That's what I learned from the meeting, we just got to keep our eye on it to make sure that the school isn't harmed in that situation.
You know, that's all I have, thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, any, and then Communication, sorry. Student work, well?
The only thing I have to report is students that are in music classes, the only thing that they were worried about is that more classes would be cut. They, I guess, it was stated that they need higher than music career, but they were just wanting to check their last.
Thank you for that. And move on to district updates, Curriculum and Mrs. Williams.
Good evening. One of the main things that I'm going to go over today, that later. I'm doing the report through this one, right? Growth.
Which one are you, you have the growth report? Your growth report is a separate agenda.
Okay, all right. So you'll be seeing the growth report later in the meeting, but just to kind of recap some of the highlights since we last met, we did have our district school improvement team meeting, which we have fifty-five members, representatives, which include staff, students, administrators, community members, and so that was a successful meeting. You'll see in the pictures here, we did invite the last part of our meeting Riverside Elementary Representatives. The reason why I invited them is they have successfully implemented the PLC process, this was several years ago, and they maintained it. So as we look at the resources, we're spending on PLC training and early release, I feel like it's really important that we tap into districts who have the proof of the equipment. So they spent about twenty minutes kind of going over their journey and sharing with us some really good data. It impacted culture, it impacted improved attendance, improved behavior, and very good adverse student behavior. In addition to that, you'll see attached to your report, my five results, you know, we had, we administer that every other year, we did have quite a few participate, we had four hundred and thirty-one, it is an anonymous risk behavior survey, it is Michigan profile for healthy youth, and we had a hundred and thirty-five, it's seventh, ninth, and eleventh, a hundred and thirty-five seventh graders, a hundred and sixty-one ninth graders, and a hundred and thirty-five eleventh graders. Couple of highlights in the safety, endanger, and violence, you'll see on your report some percentages, if you scroll a little, it's a link at the bottom. Go all the way to the bottom. Right there, you'll see two, two, right two. So in this report, you'll see percentages that are green, it doesn't mean it's good, what is good about it is it's better than Calhoun County. So for example, under safety and dangers and violence, I've heard students get called mean names or get put down one or more times. Well, eighty percent is five percent less than the county responses, so anything that is less would be kind of illuminated in green. I would like to highlight, I'll just keep going, so depression and suicide, our numbers are less than our Calhoun County numbers that have come in, still twenty-four percent in seventh grade, thirty-one percent in ninth grade, and forty-three percent this sense of hopelessness. of hopelessness is concerned. So it's just echoing our concern around mental health and wanting to make sure that we are continuing to brainstorm, what can we do to help our youth? If you flip over or scroll down to nutrition and physical activity, you will see some numbers in red. And so the red numbers have had breakfast every day in the past seven days. So even though we offer it, we, you can see our numbers, we want to address those and see if there's something else we can do to make sure that they've had it. They're less, less of a percentage than our county. If you scroll, keep scrolling, to student, school involvement, these are, if I could highlight, the data is all good, but I just wanted to shout out to our teachers because the school involvement piece, the percent of students who have had chances to talk with a teacher, one in school, we have 81% and our county is 76%. So we know our teachers are reaching out to that whole child and trying to make, build relationships. And this is just one of those times that it validates that and confirms that that work is being done. And then same with teachers have noticed when they're doing a good job, 71%, which is also higher than our counterparts. And then, while it's not higher, or while it's not marked, students who have had lots of chances to get involved in sports, we had 92% in seventh grade, 93% in ninth grade, and 91% in 11th grade. So while I'm not going to go over each and every one of these, they have been forwarded to our physical education department. Our principals will have access to them tomorrow and, um, and, and all the districts will get them. So all our counselors and students for specialists will be looking at that data to determine where in the units might be, add some additional learning around those. Really, I think, other than the student, the rest of it's pretty straightforward. Unless you have any questions, I'll go over it in more detail on the growth reports.
So, I mean, some of that information is troubling, right?
Is there like MiFi, specifically?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and it would see, I mean, is that information we'll share with the broader community? And that's, that's reflective of the community that live. We've got that, that many kids feeling depressed and, I think that should insert all of us. And again, I know we're sharing it internally, but is that, is that information we would share with the community? Maybe not in that format, but find some way to make sure the community that live and understands how our kids are feeling. I was, I was troubled when I looked at some of those numbers.
Do you mean how, how those numbers reflect versus pre-COVID?
So if you, can you scroll through that MiFi? I did include for your records, the one two years ago. So I did that, do a cross analysis. That'll be some work that, you know, we'll be digging. We just recently got this equation and I wanted to get it in front of you. But we certainly, they were concerning before COVID?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, there are some areas. How we treat each other, you know, the bullying, that comes up in our other survey that are out right now through Chico University, you know, we definitely have some work to do around that. Because if I'm in an environment, you know, we have like 80, 90% where kids are regularly hearing another kid get put down, and even adults. I mean, I've been in situations where, as adults, we're maybe not the best selves for each other. And so what will happen is prioritizing and looking at, well, and looking at where can there be natural conversations. So in elementary, for example, as well as in our secondary classes, having conversation about characters and how characters treat each other and then crosswalk that to how we can treat each other in our school and in the playground. I do think, well, it's not the magic sauce, our PBIS work, we're in the infancy stage of lead and standardizing a language that we use, what do leaders do, how do they treat each other. I think that will help. I think our counselors are doing some work with Michigan Model and just that social emotional, you know, regulating your emotions. So maybe, maybe I'm triggered or elevated when I've been making a conversation with someone. I need to be mindful of how am I regulating how I interact. Because high dosages of poor interactions and circumstances are going to lead to that, all that other Men's Club stuff.
Would that be an area that's, I mean, we've got this, I know, district improvement.
Oh, well, it's on the agenda for, yeah, that is, the only reason why I did use that response is a small community base, right? One community, well, that's only animal parents.
Well, it's a starting point to help.
Yeah, no, we, in.
The strategy, right?
Absolutely. So our meeting in April is a data dig. So we're looking at the whole child, the MiFi data, we're going to have the perception data, we'll have the final growth data for student achievement. And we're going to theme it out. We'll have those teams working around that data to look at what strategies. So our teachers and administrators, DCC and administrators will share what we're doing and some tweaks they've made. And the community and partners and students that are there will have an opportunity to say, huh, have we thought of this, those kind of things.
And the only other thought would be, you know, as we emerge from the pandemic, right? There's a whole lot of work that has to be done post-COVID around, you know, learning loss and, you know, is there some, something we want to share with the community in terms of your, here are the top priorities as we emerge from this?
And I think with, with the data and with our information from the community, we've been together, that's got to be mental health, which, you know, with that depression and even suicide would be part of mental health for sure, was one of the top rated things that we were going to address. Our biggest struggle with, with that is just finding professionals to do the work. That's, that's probably our, the biggest thing we have to work into, how do we improve in our district.
Any else? All right, move on to facilities and Mr. Robinson.
Yep, thanks. I submitted a report. One of the big topics last, the last one's been most custodians. We're still working with that. We did some work in Sonoma, got that building, looking on that. We're just, Mr. Ridgeway and I are still working on it. We just try to hold our feet to fire. I think, well, they didn't black it out yet. They, as well as everybody else, are struggling manpower wise, we know that. But we still have jobs to do. So, through everything else, you guys have the report. A couple of things I can touch on just briefly. Just wanted to shout, say thank you to the guys that plowed last week. That was a mess and all the snow we had. And they did a nice job, got that all taken care of in a couple of days. It was funny because Rob and I spoke Wednesday morning, they started plowing early in the morning. They plowed all day. And by the time they got back in Thursday, it didn't look like they'd started anything. It was crazy. But they got it taken care of. We were able, we were able, actually able to back up on Friday where many schools, a lot of them didn't. So we were happy with that. So just thanks to that crew, those guys did a great job. We're also working on some LED projects, you're aware of the ones inside the building, and working on some grants for outside the buildings, getting some of those tightened up, furnishings. One of the big things that we're going to talk about, I think Rob's got the pictures here, is Men's Club project. I've got to keep it up on that. Mr. Lincoln's here tonight as well. So some of the pictures you'll see here, these are the outside, the front of the building. You're standing out right now, they're just starting putting glass up, doors in.
I just looked through them, so.
Yeah, so just, it's.
They were too fast, ain't yelling.
No, you're, and so just outside you can see, that's just the main access for the construction works right now. That's actually where the storage area is going to be in the, kind of their loading dock area is what it appears to be. Won't really be a loading dock. There's the inside of the building. You can see it's looking pretty nice in there. They've got, I'd say as of Friday, probably over three quarters of it painted, all white, lighting and everything. This is the bathroom area. No, the walls will not be purple. That's the water resistant boards it's taking in the, and it's been drywalled and they're sanding it, mudding it out at that time. So again, no, the walls will not be purple. So that's what the bathrooms will look like. Those will be all done. As you can see, there's a lot of ductwork in there as far as exhaust and supply area, the bathroom areas and the kitchen areas. That's an area from all the way across, looking at the bathroom and the kitchen and the, those areas. You can see it's kind of going to have a, there'll be ceilings over those, so that'll just be kind of an open area. And that's kind of a panoramic picture I took of the building. It's a good sized building and you don't realize how big it really is until you're standing inside of it. The outside of it, it looks pretty big. But when you stand inside of it, it's, it's a very large building and they're doing a great job. Working on getting power still with consumers. They're still, I think, going through some paperwork processes and trying to get transformers and parts and pieces. The same stands with the water, we approve the water permitting. The water will be in Harper Creek's name, but it will be built to the Men's Club, the same over the power. So it's kind of our standard, that's our lease agreement with the Men's Club. And that's it. They're doing a good job. Like you said, we like the building. I've been following up on a couple of things, contractors and whatnot. And it looks good, it looks really excellent.
Do you want to finish the rest of your report and then we'll bring Mr. Lincoln? Or do you want to bring Mr.?
Actually, that's, I don't have a lot else to talk about. So unless there's questions of me, the high school swim scoreboard has been entered. We're hoping to have that done in August. Future needs projects, we're working on some of the new ones right now. The middle school board is up and operating and we've gotten lots of kudos on that. Food service spend down, we've been talking about that for a while. High school HVAC project, we'll talk about that a little bit later. I don't have a lot of more updates. The biggest thing right now, I know they're, they've gotten orders out so we can actually get equipment ordered. While we still get contracts and stuff filed, but through the legal, you know, teams and stuff, they've got it so where at least the contracts are available, getting equipment ordered. So now we're still working on the financing. And we'll discuss that more later on.
What did you guys want to get on the scoreboard?
Oh, the swim scoreboard? Yeah, so we got a call from the company that, that Tronics from the swim scoreboard. And they actually had, apparently manufactured a college swim scoreboard that the college no longer wanted. So they asked us, would you like this scoreboard? So that when you order it's bigger, more pixels, it's got more bells and whistles. And so we negotiated, they had the price up to be negotiated. So for $10,000 more dollars, we're going to get a board that's almost, let's say double the size.
It's probably two feet wider and a foot and a half taller, but it's big.
It's significant in the larger.
So, yeah, and, and that will also help us get it in before the season starts. So.
It's already built, yeah.
It's already built because we were getting concerned that, that, you know, just like everything else in the world right now, it just keeps getting pushed further and further back. And I didn't want to be in September, in the middle of the swim season, trying to, you know, install a board.
And they estimated it was about $30,000 more in stuff that we bring. Let me negotiate a little bit.
Mr. Lincoln, would you like to share anything with us on Wild Spark Night's football?
Thank you to Jim too for all of his guidance out there. He's, he's like the clerk of the works to make sure everything is going as it's supposed to be. I just wanted to mention a few things. I realize this is your February meeting. I think next, next month we're going to be almost in, well, close to being in the building maybe. But the sports complex, right now we have signed up over 530 kids for basketball. So they're just chomping at the bit to get out there. And it looks like it'll be late March when it'll start. Games will be in April and a little bit in May. And then when that's finished, then we will go outdoors with spring soccer. But we've sent out, I don't know how many, how many of you get our newsletters, I see. Oh, all right. Oh, they're still good. We sent out a question, kind of like a questionnaire, if you had any ideas for the building because, you know, we've done sports there for, for years and years, but here are just some, I thought I'd mention that. And some of these are possibilities. Some are probably off the ball, but ping pong, birthday parties, adult volleyball, batting cages, adult basketball, roller skating. That went over big. I was there a couple of weeks, I think it was three weeks ago. And as Jim showed you those pictures, the building is immense. It's 24,000 square feet. And when you're in there without any curtains or basket oops or floor, you're, yeah, this would make a great roller rink, but I could come later. Martial arts, floor hockey, flag football, pickleball, fitness classes, aerobics, yoga, zumba, gymnastics, dance classes, cheerleading, archery, target sports, dodgeball, ninja warrior classes, adult volleyball, rock climbing, coed adult basketball, women's basketball, graduation open houses, weddings, baby showers, adult soccer. I haven't told anybody, you can't bring liquor to this place. So I might eliminate a few things. And if you have any ideas, you know, be glad to put those down as well. In the building, we have three courts, three basketball courts, which also serve as volleyball courts. And we'll also, we have lines that will be there for pickleball, which is a game that is played a lot by a lot of senior citizens, but youth have not played it. We'll have nine pickleball courts on the three courts. And I might mention the, the courts are kind of designated. We have one that is like green and, and white, which will be Michigan State. We'll have a Spartan emblem there. One that'll be for Wilds Park, and that is blue and white, just like Harper Creek is. And of course, maize and blue on another one, which will be dedicated to Michigan. No offense to some of you. And then we have a concession stand, a lounge area where people can eat. We have bathrooms. There's no more porta potties. The Men's Club, a storage area, maintenance area, janitor area. We have a, an area of the lounge that will honor the founding fathers of the Men's Club. You know, we're often asked, how come you call it the Men's Club? And I kind of, we're, we're actually standing on the shoulders of those individuals. If you're familiar with Tom Brokaw's book a number of years ago, The Greatest Generation, these were people much like my father who served in World War II, came back to the States and got families going and formed groups, organizations like the Wilds Park Men's Club. I had one in Detroit called Southfield Woods Dance Club. It was in Northwest Detroit. And that's where I played baseball and basketball. I never really thought about these guys that had done it, but they were there, you know, they're just kind of silently, they, they came and they, they did all that stuff. But half of our, the boys and girls, half of them are boys, half are girls. So we, we take everybody. And we also, there'll also be an area for those people that donated money. And the building, when we got started, I think back in, I was on the board and got off the board and it was 27, 2017, and it was going to be $1.8 million. Well, of course, that's grown. It's $3.3 million. And, and I did say at the time, everything will be paid for. And that, I stand by that. And of course, will be a Harper Creek building. And, and also uses by Harper Creek can be, can be in there as well. Also, we take, we have business donations. If someone donates a thousand dollars, we put a four foot by six foot banner up with their name on it. And that's good for two years. And then it's renewable for $250 a year. So if any of you were so inclined, or we do take donations, $20 and up, and then it will be on a plaque that will be on the entranceway. I might say too, the entranceway, when you come in, there's a big welcome sign. And if you've been to the Cleveland Clinic, they have that there. And that's, it says welcome. And then in all different languages of the world, it has a name for welcome. And that's what we do. We take, we're looking at, probably I looked at all the schools. We, we have something like 60 plus schools that have kids that play in this program. And pretty much 16 school districts that send kids there. So we're, we're very glad to have that. And it's a nice thing in Harper Creek to have. And also it would be on, as, as Rob mentioned, the, the DDA, that's right down the road on it, the Downtown Development Authority. That, that building would be right there. And it was interesting, you mentioned about the sewer line. When I was on the board, we talked about sewers, they were saying, those sewers are 90% 90% at capacity. That was before they had a second hotel. So I don't know if that was a real thing when they told us back then. Thank you for having to get that in. And if they have any questions on the building?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Gary. We appreciate it.
All right, move on to finance, Mr. Meyer.
I gotta say, I have a third grader who's very excited for basketball at the Wilds Park this, in March, but.
That's a challenge.
I have three reports that I have attached. The first two, the cash balance report, is just the regular report that you see, cash flow's good. The other one is the check register, January check register. I just like to send you every check that we rate for the month. And then the third one is the fund, general fund summary. It's the same information, that's it, that you're used to getting, it's just in a little bit different format. Since this is the way that I am going to present the budget to you, and you guys are going to hopefully approve the budget, I thought I would do the exact same information to you in the same format. So we'll talk about the budget later on in the.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that this is, you know, that when you, we say here's the budget, this is the basic budget, we want to be consistent, it's the accounting items. And then you can see how much has been either the revenue that's received and or expended on the expenditures, so it's nearing 50% in general because we're about halfway through the year.
So, yeah, the percentage is right on track for almost everything. It's a little lower up on the revenue side for the federal because the title book, the title budget, we still can't draw on because it's usually due in June and it's only been, it was only due a couple of weeks ago, so it just hasn't been approved. We've been spending the money, we just have to draw on that, that's why the percentage is a little bit lower. And same with the incoming transfers and lower incoming transfers for the revenue, if you go up, Mr. Ridgeway. It's a little bit lower because that's where the casino money is, which we don't get until June, and the ISB program enforcement that we get throughout the year, but usually not fulfilled until towards the end of the year. All the other, the expenditures really were pretty much right on track for where we stood, which would be a good thing since I just revised the budget tonight, so. As far as the reports, that's the only thing I have for now, unless you guys have questions on that. But the, there was two other things that I wanted to touch base on. The first one being, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but the childcare grant, Mr. Swan applied for and received $176,000 to improve the three before and after school centers that we have. We had a team meeting and a couple of the major things that's going to be spent on is a security entry project. Part of the grant had to be, and is going to be used for staff bonuses and fund supplies and crafts. It was really fun getting some of the orders and seeing the fun things that they're going to be doing with this, with the money. Some other possibilities that we went over is cafeteria tables. I know last year we spent some money from Esters to spread out the kiddos. And so that they're looking at possibly replacing all of the elementary cafeterias with some of this money. And another idea was a projector screen, an audio upgrade for, was it the cafeteria? Yeah, the cafeteria. Possible recruitment bonus, possible playground upgrades and payment, possible payment reductions for, they're looking at different options for short weeks or people in need.
Favor reductions to parents.
What's that?
Favor reductions to parents.
Right. So that's what I have on the childcare grant. Does anyone have questions on that? And then the last thing I just wanted to touch base on, I don't know if you've seen it on the news and things, it's the governor's budget. Again, this is just her hopes and dreams, right? The proposed budget is an increase of $435 from, so it would go from $8,700 ever receiving this year to $9,135. Another bullet point that I found to be good was they were maintaining at-risk funding, which we like that. And something that was interesting that, who knows what's going to happen, but something that she put out there was a retention bonus. And this way that she structured it in her original budget is that $2,000 for all staff starting fall of 2022, $2,000 for anyone who stayed into 2023, and then for year three, $3,000 for certified staff, and then for year four, $4,000 for certified staff. Again, this is just her original budget, but I just wanted you guys to have a little more information on it.
Yeah, the next step is to go with the legislature and they more than likely will not act until after the May revenue estimating conference, but we just had the January one. They'll work on it, but they won't come to it finally.
We'll hear a lot of rumors and things, but.
Right. My guess is, from my experience, more than likely the 450, is that right?
435.
I think that's fairly solid, just because it's an election year and there was quite a bit of extra money in the school aid fund based on the January revenue estimating conference. So I do think that's pretty good. And probably supporting at-risk, getting a little bit more of a special, things like that are, I would say, pretty solid, but it's these other things like the retention bonus, that'll probably be the ones that'll be, if people say yes or no. And I'm looking at budgeting now for four years down the road, maybe something that some legislators may not want to do, or earmarked money in the future, which hasn't, I don't know if that's been done, not sure, possibly. Ready to address it, Tom? Thank you.
Thank you, and moving on to Mr. Meyer and technology.
All right. The big ones is our network projects going on. We had our wireless network upgrade, I'd say half completed a week ago. I say half completed because we have to replace some of our oldest hardware before we do upgrade all the way. But we have that hardware in stock now and we're working on getting it deployed, so we'll be doing another one maybe over spring break, another upgrade, so that is good. So we're keeping an eye on how things are going. I think we still have a few glitches to work through with some of our computers connecting and whatnot, so we're monitoring that. Speaking of delays, we have new core network switches ordered, which is, as they sound like, they're the core of everything. They're supposed to be here this month, but now they're telling us they're coming in May. So we have some other network hardware that's just going out and about, it's now delayed until June. So what this means is all of this network upgrades are becoming a summer project, which we'll make the best of because we can do a lot more disruptive things when there's no classes in session. So that will happen. We know we have batteries that we have to get installed and backup devices, and you don't know where to place the battery, you have to unplug this stuff and plug into it, so it will definitely be, only taking advantage of the downtime. We had an outage at Beagle Lake last week that was caused by, we're not sure what caused it, but a power surge or something caused the outage. And we have two fiber optic cable connections to each building, and one of them had a defective cable in it, and the other one had gone offline, so they were basically without reliable access for a whole day. And so we believe we've got that fixed. We had the vendor come out and deals with their network and they were able to identify the cable and replace it. So that was positive and it seems like things have held steady since then. Upcoming, we did order the high school AD system as well, that's also delayed. They have everything in stock except for the main like frame of the system, of course, which they're saying is March delivery now. I would say the earliest we'll get it is March, I won't say it's coming in March, but then that will be nice to have that system dealt with. Another one is the device pricing. We still, the state bidding isn't done yet, but what it looks like we're going to do is just do our own RFP so we can get bids on devices because we'll probably get equal or better pricing and we can get ahead of the game by ordering early. So I'm hopeful that by the next meeting, we can have an RFP out, get results back and have some bids, have some numbers to look at for getting devices for next year. So that would be the Chromebooks for the kindergarten through eighth grade and then the Windows laptops for ninth through 12. Our servers, which is basically the servers as well as the storage for our whole network, is getting near the end of the server site, so I'm putting that out there as well. It's not in imminent need of replacement. The preliminary estimate I got was $90,000 for the whole project. That will be replacing all three of our servers as well as our storage appliance. But from talking to the vendor, I think that's going to come down because we can probably get away with just two servers. They measure the capacity of the servers based on how many processors and memory, and we're using very low, like less than 10% of our capacity right now, which is really good. And so with that's low usage, we can actually downsize a bit, which will save us money in licensing costs and whatnot. So just putting that out there right now, we'll keep looking as time goes and get in better bids on that. And then the high school auditorium projector is another one we're kind of eyeing for replacement. It's a really big projector, it has to project 100 feet or so, which makes it a very expensive projector. So the replacement cost is just about $20,000 for the projector itself and then another $4,000, $5,000 for installation and required objects as well. So that's something that we're going to be looking to do. I'd love to do it this summer, but we'll see what happens. And then there's a control system in the auditorium as well, much like we have in this room where you can control all the stuff, and we're going to be looking at getting that upgraded as well because it helps a lot when they have groups and meetings coming in to be able to actually use the system without having an expert there. So those are something to look at, I'm sure there'll be more stuff coming, and I'll bring that to you as it does.
Questions for Mr. Meyer? Okay, we're moving on to comments related to agenda items.
Harold, Dave?
Mine's not for the agenda.
Okay.
If I, sorry if I marked the wrong box.
Nothing about the current agenda. I will make the decision.
So, we told it to be considered an agenda?
Yeah, we have it voted in.
Mary Edman?
Please remember to state your name and address.
I will. My name is Mary Edman, and I live at 803 Clark Road, that's the Lee Lake area. I am here in front of you to give an opportunity for you to learn a little more about our COVID situation, which we've been going through for some time. And I recently came across a book, it's called The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy Jr. It's a little long, but it has a lot of information and then from that you can glean and learn what you would like to learn. But I recommend you look into it, I know Amazon has it. I got mine from Barnes and Noble and my neighbor said that Willett Library has a digital copy you can get. But I highly recommend for information, kind of helping you to set straight and understand things in a different way, a little bit more, I want to say sensible, but a little easier to understand. I found it helpful for myself. Thank you very much for all that you do for us.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that anybody else did not want to speak right now. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary?
Taking a motion that the Harper Creek Court of Education approved the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school services fund checks, school lunch, and student in-school activities fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. Also approve the following meeting minutes as reviewed, January 10th, 2022 meeting minutes, January 24th, special meeting minutes, January 24th, closed session minutes.
It's been moved by Mr. Barry Smith and one of you gentlemen over there, who is Dr. Dr. Borders, supported. And do we have discussion? All right, hearing and seeing, this is, oh, did you get a chance to read the closed session? Please hold on.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith? Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver? Yes. And Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion approved.
All right, motion carries five zero, and we'll move on to information discussion and start with school safety update. Mr. Ridgeway?
Okay, we had our school safety meeting today, our committee met. The topics that we talked about first, an update on the crosswalk. I know that we are in process right now, waiting for the civil engineer from King Scott to look to see if we could put a right turn lane and out of that, what do we call that? The lane or the exits from our cross street? And then see where the crosswalk would lie. We were thinking it was going to run the south side, county government north side, but we got a civil engineer to help us with that process. There is a fire hydrant to deal with as well. Another concern that came up, however, is we see that there is a business way across the street from the Shell, and is that going to be another issue with the crosswalk and case crossing? It appears, or is it going to be a dollar general? We were also told during the meeting that there is two more properties for sale, commercial properties for sale in the same area, so I guess we'll have to see how that goes down. Right now, we want to make sure across Beagle Lake Road, there is a crosswalk currently at the corner. There's not many sidewalks there, I think that's one of the issues, is we may have to really consider doing this sidewalk project as well. We talked about doing a trail around the entire main campus area, kind of like you might see at Riverside Elementary, but that would be very costly, we looked at the price of it, and then trying to find grants, potentially recreational grants that would help. I did talk to the Valley Community Foundation and there was interest and they had some ideas, but I'm not going to say they're going to just fully fund it, we're moving forward. It's going to be a kind of a long-term project, but it may be one we need to get to sooner than later if that gets developed. We talked about the threat assessment process. We've had a couple of threat assessments over the last two months and want to continue to get better at it because we have, the first part is, is it safe for kids? That's where the police go to that, go to the house of the potential threat and do interviews and interview people around that and do the police investigation. But the other piece is, okay, now that we know some information, how can we help this student, especially if it's a true threat, or they may have made some sort of threat? Maybe there's health issues, where can we get them support? And that's where the school staff is involved and it comes together. So we're really working on that process to make it so it's streamlined. We talked about, or especially Officer Mackey, talked about the camera system upgrade. He would like to upgrade our system and he got, he did receive some bids, so he had an idea of the cost. Again, it would be a grant, probably funded project, I don't think we have enough money, is it 400,000, I think that was the number?
Four seventy-four.
Four, almost 500,000.
Low, right?
Right. It's a lot of money. What it would do differently is it would have facial recognition. So let's just say that we had an instance where maybe we had a threat to the school and we had a picture of the person who made the threat. It could go into the system and then it would alert us if that person came on cameras on the camera. So it would be more proactive. Right now ours is pretty reactive. We usually use the cameras to see what happened in any event, not necessarily to prevent any event, so that would be what the upgrade would look like for the upcoming safety. And then we had a long discussion about vapes. Vapes is an issue, it's an issue for kids. Vaping is not good, but unfortunately, younger and younger and younger kids are doing, are vaping. We are catching them in the middle school specifically, so they have set up a system now where they have adults, teachers and other adults within the building, parapros that are inside of the bathrooms during passing time to just make sure to deter vaping. And then they have made it so only one bathroom is open during lunch. Lunch is the spot where kids are, you know, have the most freedom and also having an adult near the entrance to the bathroom at all times during lunchtime. And also having an adult near the entrance to the bathroom at all times during lunchtime. But I'm here to tell you as a person that's been involved in education for thirty-one years that the vaping issue is much worse than the smoking issue used to be. I would say more kids try vaping than ever tried smoking. So just so you have an idea of that, I don't want anybody to be surprised. That was the basics of the safety committee. Anything else, Mr. Bass, that's on the front end? We didn't talk about, I guess we did also talk about our reunification plan. We talked about that as a board a little bit when we looked at our overall plan. But reunification, and we think it's important for us to continue to be up to speed. I believe Officer Mackey and I did it in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And now we're going to just look at it again to make sure everything is in place. And that means if we had a bad, the worst event, then how you reunify students with their parents.
One of the things about vaping is when you do take the object away, the, now, it should have a plan of where that goes because it's not safe to keep them on like in a drawer, especially a lot because of the batteries.
Yeah, I know that that question came up actually from a parent a few, maybe months ago. And I had asked, and the principals turned them over to the police. But they.
They don't say on kids.
Yeah, and that's the thing that they do with the vaping thing. Long enough for the investigation to.
What steps are we taking to educate kids about the dangers of vaping? Do we have assembly, I mean?
We haven't had, I don't think we've had a specific assembly about vaping. But I know within classrooms, I know teachers are continuing to, and we have promotional materials that they use for anti-vaping. But I think education, our health curriculum, I think is probably the biggest priority. And based on what I've said, we've got to continue and make sure that that is top end because it's so available at this point for kids.
It was asked whether there could be monetary tickets given out for that type of thing. Officer Mackey said it was not a law or orders at this time that he was aware of. So that doesn't, there's no key to have that besides, you know, suspension to that nature.
Even if they're underage?
Yeah, that's what he said. Right, there was no monetary, like getting a ticket, like a speeding ticket. There's nothing like that. You would go to the divorce system potentially. But in a lot of cases, they won't go to the divorce system with one. And someone is distributing, that's a difference.
When you say that middle school has the biggest issues, are we talking fifth graders too? Fifth, sixth graders?
I would say, I would say mostly in the upper middle school. Is that the biggest issue? High school has issues as well, but it appears, we're just worried because younger and younger kids are, it's becoming available to younger kids. And that becomes problematic. I mean, it's like smoking, you know, when I was a kid, it was always there, but it wasn't as available in middle school as it was in high school. But I'm just worried that it's becoming more available, more socially acceptable in the kid world and the adult world.
And what is current discipline?
Currently? I think if you're caught with a vape the first time, it's a one-day suspension. If you're caught with more than one, it's up to a ten-day suspension for distributing. But it continues to, it continues to progress to get more and further.
I'm just, again, I thought it's a form of policy issue, right? But if we're seeing it become such a big problem, a one-day suspension may not be enough of a deterrent. It's becoming that big of an issue. So again, we're not going to solve that tonight, but there might be a, I get that we're not going to find kids, but if there was a longer suspension, would that be more of a deterrent?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good thought. We'll talk about it to see. Right now, we're, we know it's an issue and we need to address it. I think the educational piece along with deterring. I think it's better that we have people that, you know, we're making a concerted effort as the adults to say, it's not okay, we're going to be here so any areas in which it happens, matter. And then, yeah, potentially look at even different disciplines.
Sounds like Mrs. Thayer and her team have different tactics that they're using to find kids that are vaping. So as much as I can do right now. School year update, COVID-nineteen data.
Okay, I am relieved to report that the surge that we were seeing in January, right after, really, when our meeting on January tenth, it was the, I would say, the beginning of the real surge. And I was looking at the numbers during that time. So on the week of the tenth, we had a hundred and thirty-seven positive cases in the district, which was way far and above anything we've seen within this pandemic. A big week previously would have been upwards of forty, like thirty-eight to forty. So a hundred and thirty-seven on one, the week of the tenth. The next week, it dropped to eighty-four, which is still, you know, extremely high as compared to what we've seen. And then we started to see even further drop, fifty-three cases the next week on the week of the twenty-fourth, twenty-two the week of the thirty-first. And then last week, we only saw five positive cases. So it's, it's a good trend to see. The health officials, and I say health officials, I want to talk about Mr. Pesel. He's the health official in our county. They had predicted it would potentially go close to zero by the time it got, we got to mid February, based on looking at models of other areas that were a little bit ahead of us. Right now, the health department is taking a look at the rates. And remember when we were talking about rates per hundred thousand? If you get below a hundred per hundred thousand, you go from high transmission to, there's three different levels below that. Moderate eventually goes to low. Right now, we're not, haven't quite hit that point. But there has been conversation in those meetings about lessening restrictions once it does hit below a hundred, which it should soon based on the numbers that we're seeing. And if that were to occur, more than likely, it would mean that we would not have mandatory quarantine of students or people in the county. We would have to continue to do some contact tracing. And the difference, this is how he described it. Let's say there was a positive in a classroom, then we would have to notify the parents in that classroom that there was a positive and that they would monitor their students for symptoms over the next ten to fourteen days. I'm just, that's basic, but that's kind of the direction it's kind of going towards. In terms of masking, there really hasn't been a lot of talk about that. He had said that they would potentially upgrade our, sort of what would they say? They would take a hard look at their masking recommendations for tools for, you know, indoor spots, things like that as well. So I anticipate that this will happen soon. I mean, in the next few days to, you know, a week or so. But I'm not that person making that decision, so I will keep you updated. Other than that, in terms of data, you know, we have, you know, we saw the, like I said, the highest increase of COVID cases. And I know some folks would say, okay, Rob, what, is it because we don't have masks on? And for me, I guess I'm jumping to a conclusion, so it's my opinion, but looking at the other cases that occurred in the, in the area. So for example, Harper Creek had three hundred and two cases in the last five weeks. Very good, five weeks between four meetings. Marshall, and as is based on their dashboard, had three hundred and five cases during that same time. Lakeview had two hundred and seventy-three. Battle Creek Public had at least a hundred and thirty-eight and they do mask. And I know Battle Creek did do a full district virtual period of time, I think for a little over a week or maybe a little over a week. We did virtual also for our middle school and our case numbers went way down afterwards. So that that was something. And in Tenfield, they went up by about two hundred and seventy-nine, or had two hundred and seventy-nine cases in that five-week period. So, you know, I know the schools are different sizes, so it's comparing a little bit of apples to oranges. But in general, you know, everybody saw this surge. It's not something that we saw just because of our circumstance, but everybody saw a surge. I think the state saw the surge. If you looked at any of the state data and the mapping of COVID cases, it was just like going straight up and then it's going straight back down at this point. And it's really decreed, increased exponentially and decreasing exponentially. I do want to say a little bit about the work that was done at the building levels, and this is by everybody involved. In the office, they do the, you know, the contact tracing and calls to parents. And that was done at a team effort. Everybody in the office, including our health aides and our nurse and our new technician that came on board, our CDC liaison person, as well as our secretarial staff, our principals, and anybody else, all hands on deck. But at the same exact time in the classroom, when these kids are out of the classroom, that's a huge effect. So if you're a teacher and you have five kids gone, eight kids gone in a day, and then the next day, a different group of kids is gone, and the next week, a different group of kids is gone, it is a very difficult process to continue to teach because you kind of teach the same new thing over and over and over again. So I want to make sure that I say out loud that, you know, I know how difficult it is for everybody at every level. In the classroom, the paraprofessionals who were substitute teaching and working with kids all the way to the offices that were doing all the contact tracing. And I appreciate the work that is done. I'm hopeful that we're going to see a trend where we're going to stay, our numbers are going to stay down. And that's what the health official feels is going to happen for a period of time. And that's why they are considering changing their restrictions a little bit. Last week, we had five positive cases and sixteen quarantines. And sixteen quarantines is a number that we haven't seen in a long, long time. Typically, we'd be at a low number, thirty or forty quarantines, a high number, two hundred. And you think about two hundred kids out of school in any given week, that's just a lot of people. So what's next? I think that we need to see what comes from the health department in terms of what they believe is coming. I think, you know, even though we haven't filed every single recommendation that the health departments came out with, you know, we are partners with them, they have been very helpful, like test and stay options, our testing options. About seventy percent of our kids are using the test and stay option when we have a quarantine. So when I say we had sixteen kids quarantined, I believe ten of them were doing test and stay. So only six kids were, they were out of school. If you're, if you have a COVID exposure at home, you can't use test and stay. You have to, you have to be attendance. Just so everybody has an idea what that means. Some of those are, some of those close contacts from home quarantines as well. But I'm very, very hopeful, but I also want to, you know, be as upfront with the whole board that the January spike was something we had not seen. Cases were as high as, higher than they've ever been by a long time. We're also, when I say we, it's not myself, but the health department told us that they are tracking hospitalizations. And so that's going to be a key number, I know in my weekly update to staff and board. I always put the hospitalizations in. I think this morning, there was thirty-two COVID cases in Cowling County area that were in the hospital due to COVID. And that's down from, I think the high was in the seventies, but it's been steadily in the fifties and sixties the last month. Down a little bit there too. So, and that's the, that's the part that matters. You know, we, deaths from COVID is something that's happened and it happens. We know people that have been involved and getting people out of hospitals, I think, is a great sign of hopefully moving forward. Are we getting to the end of the pandemic? I don't want to go down that road yet, but I have heard in the national news, I've heard people talk about the endemic and what's that look like? And the endemic is going to happen. When it happens, it's when we no longer have the restrictions and we just learn how to live with it, just like we live with the flu, flu season, things like that. It'll eventually get to that point.
And one of my concerns is that we do have students that get quarantined multiple times. And so they're missing larger parts.
Yeah, I was talking to staff this morning, one of our elementary staffs, and they were talking about that, you know. It's not unusual to see kids that have lived twenty, thirty, even forty days because of COVID. And then on top of that, we have people that have attendance issues anyway. And all of a sudden, we have children that are out of school for, you know, forty and fifty days in a, you know, this time of year. From the beginning of the year till now, that's too much to use, it's too hard to educate. Our attendance numbers are going up, like we're in the nineties now. We're running in the neighborhood of ninety-two, ninety-three percent on a daily basis. Typical for our school is ninety-five percent, just so everybody has an idea. A typical winter day is ninety-five percent because we're going to have seasonal flu and people that are sick. But we're getting closer and closer to those numbers because we were running seventy-seven percent in January, seventy-six. And we were, you know, approaching that seventy-five percent line, which is our, the time we would have went virtual. So we were right there teetering on being virtual.
Big improvement so far.
Move on to the masking discussion. Want to move that over? Masking discussion.
Oh, I mean, every, you know, every meeting we've had, discussion about it. We know that's the, one of the recommendations from our health, our per health department. We have not moved forward with the masking of all of our students. We've done some surveying to see where our community lies. And our community was fairly, fairly strong, I think about seventy, thirty percent wise in terms of not masking. Staff was sixty, forty. And just to give an idea, students were more in the seventy, seventy, thirty bringing range or higher than that of not masking. But that's community feeling, you know, we have to look at the lessons with kids and where we're at and where our numbers at in transmission. Right now, the transmission is, appears to be lower. And I'm not an expert, but that's where it appears to be at this point in time.
I think if we keep track of what's happening, if we get back to the January among positives and quarantines, we need to relook at that. But it looks like maybe, you know, we're going to be moving away from this. So. Masking is, I don't see it as strong as what would be if we hit the January numbers again.
We did, just so people know, we offered all of our staff N ninety-five masks. You know, that was really strong, I think, in early January to get those out. So we secured some enough for our staff with their interest. So we still have those. We're still masking on buses. Expectation is still happening.
That's a fact, I would make it correct.
It is at this point. It is at this point, yes.
Wouldn't see, doesn't appear to be anything in the data that would cause me to change my point of view.
I think the numbers are only getting better, obviously. And I still think it's a family, a personal choice. And, you know, I talk to Rob as we, you know, put the agenda together every month. And we wanted to keep this on there to give everybody a fair shake on the masking discussion. But, you know, my opinion is, I'm not sure we'll see this on in the coming months unless, you know, numbers were to spike at that time. So. Anybody have any further comment? Okay, we'll move on to committee updates. Personnel committee.
Okay, personnel committee met and talked about upcoming negotiations. We're negotiating with our teachers group, we're negotiating, I believe, with our secretarial group and our maintenance group. And talked, I wouldn't say we went deep into strategy, but we just talked about the ideas of where our budget's at and how we want to approach the negotiation process. Obviously, we want to be fair with wage and we need to be competitive with wage because right now, it's a really competitive market. So we've got to make sure that we are looking at other schools and other businesses to see how much do we need to pay so that we are fairly compensating our people. On top of that, we will definitely look at any languages. So typically, if we have language concerns during the contract period, we keep track of those and then try to resolve them during the negotiation process. Trying to see if anything helps really big. I believe we have some negotiation dates that are in, at least proposed for March to start the teacher negotiations. That typically is first. Typically, the other groups will negotiate either after or after we've been negotiating with the teacher group for a period. We will go, I guess that's the other thing. We talked about planning and we talked about the whole board. At the next meeting, we'll go in closed session and talk negotiation strategy. And we, strategy means budget, how much money do we have? And, you know, what are some of those things that the Board of Education feels like are very strongly about? You may have strong feelings about calendar, that's a negotiable topic. So just keep in mind, we'll talk about that in closed session so that you. in mind, we'll talk about that in closed session, so that you, you know, make your, your views known, so that all of us can, you know, just have a, have a, have a, be well prepared when we start. Uh, the budget committee met, um, we will be meeting right before the meetings last Thursday, I believe it was the meeting date, and went over the financials that, um, Mrs. Overmeyer shared with us. Um, reviewed the updated budget, which will happen here in a minute on the agenda. Uh, we also looked, we looked at the before and after care grant, asked a lot of questions about, you know, how that money's going to be spent. Um, you heard, you know, some of the, uh, information, and, you know, we, I do want to thank Mr. Swan, he is our before and after care, uh, he runs the program, so, director here, and, and he was the one that wrote the grant, so thank him for, for that. It was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, so very significant. And then as a, as a budget committee, we also are looking at the future to say, okay, building wise and space wise, and what's the next steps? And so with that in mind, I would like to call a building committee meeting, um, and I don't have a date at this point, we'll, we'll send the date out, but we anticipate before the next board meeting, they'll have a building committee meeting, so we can talk about space, and we can talk about things we heard in the last meeting of teachers on purpose, and how can we, uh, how can we brainstorm and how can we solve some of those issues? I'd also like to call a policy meeting, been working on the trune policies, and so at the end of February, I believe we'll be ready to, uh, have the policy committee go over all the trune policies, especially the ones that have choices, so we can bring it back to the whole board in March. I think that's a, a approximate time. I don't think we'll vote in March, um, we need to be conscientious of when the turnover happens, especially for our student handbooks, because there's, there is definitely things in the policy book that will cause the student handbooks to change, so we might want to delay till when school gets out to actually implement the trune policies. But I want to be ready. But if we're ready, we could definitely move forward earlier. We just would have to be conscientious that some, some of our student pol, student handbook policies need to be updated as well. I know the principals are worried about that one, uh, if we make a change and then their policy books don't match. So call those, I'm going to call those two meetings coming up soon.
All right, we'll move on to the revised two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to turn this right over to Mrs. Overmeyer, and I will move the cursor as you, as you tell me, and I'll make it big enough so everybody at home, as well as in the audience, can follow along.
All right. So, um, I have the original budget that Carol proposed, um, and you guys approved back in June, and then the revision that I did. The beginning fund ba, balance, Carol's good, she got an under one percent difference, um, so it actually ended at four point five million dollar fund balance.
So as, as we're looking at it, so the, you can see it proposed and revision, so we're looking between these, these two things, the difference. Okay, sorry.
And, um, with the difference, a lot of, I'm going to go over each one, you know, out of the bigger ones, but a lot of it just has to do with, um, Carol and I budgeting a little bit differently, right? Um, she, we have something called UAL, which is, um, part of retirement, and it comes in as revenue under state, and it also has to be, um, expended. She just didn't put that in either the revenue or the expenditure, so a lot of the difference is just spreading that, it's two point six million dollars. So, um, a lot of the state increase, that would be that, and a lot of the, like, per line item, um, differences would be just spreading out that two point six million dollars. Um, the blend, I was like, so this was something that's a little bit different, again, since I'm not the one who built the original budget, it's a little bit hard to, you know, go back. Um, the blended count, audited count that I was given, um, by our new account person was, uh, two thousand six hundred and eighty-two FTE. Now, that's with, um, gen, our gen ed count and our special ed count. Uh, when I look back at Carol's notes, it looks like for just gen ed, uh, she used two thousand five hundred and ninety, and our actual gen ed is two thousand six hundred and seven, so we were up a little bit there. Uh, with state also, we received two hundred and sixty thousand more in thirty-one A, which is, uh, at-risk funding. Some of that is carryover, uh, from last year that we didn't spend, so we get, we get to spend it this year. The eighty, eighty-four thousand, we received more in special education, um, in this, in the state line item, but that act, actually decreases when the ISB reimburses us, um, so in the incoming transfer, that would decrease that a little bit. The federal increased quite a bit, and most of that is just Esters money, um, in the original budget, Carol didn't expense all, or didn't put any of the revenue of the Esters. So, but again, that's a grant, so it comes out for revenue, and it's, you'll see it throughout the expenditure side. We, uh, with federal also received about three hundred thousand dollars more in title. And again, that's in and out on the revenue and expenditure side. For the incoming, uh, transfer, I know I said that it decreased how much, um, special ed ISB reimburses us, but they actually, um, also increased us to a reimbursement of eighty-eight percent instead of the eighty-seven percent that we originally were supposed to be getting.
Is that where the casino money is?
It is, yep, uh, that's next line. Uh, I, but I did budget a little more than what Carol had in the casino funds, um, I have us getting right around a little point five billion. So that's the revenue side of things. I'm going to move on to the expenses unless someone has questions right now. Um, a lot of it is just, again, uh, this was passed back in June, we didn't actually settle the contract for the teachers, so, uh, the salary and teacher payments are a little more in the, um, proposed than what was originally budgeted for. Um, another big difference, again, I know I mentioned this before, but the two point six million I talked about, um, for UAL, retirement, which increases the retirement percentage, is, um, spread throughout, and a lot of that is in instruction, because that is where most of our salaries are, which would make sense why a lot of that is spread right there. Uh, another, for instruction, another big difference from Carol's original budget to this budget would be the, um, sub-costs. Uh, we do have some grants covering some of the sub-costs, but not, not nearly what, what it is, and I hope, hopefully I overbudgeted for that, since the COVID numbers are going down a little bit, and, you know, things like that. Another increase, um, is the, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand in early lit money that, uh, was not in the original budget, so that would come out of the instruction, and, um, six hundred and sixty-five thousand in summer programming, that was not in the original that we, that we have budgeted for this school year. When I look, when I looked at it, most of the increased number, you know, when I prepare a budget and then I compare it, uh, it ma, it makes sense with the retirement increase and the grants being included. One of the large ones that I wanted to talk about is the maintenance and operations, uh, the HVAC, some of the HVAC expenses, the added custodials, um, that is being taken out of Esters is included in, in why that is so much higher. Uh, but again, it, the revenue is increased to cover some of that. The technology would be another line item that you see quite a bit of an increase, and that is from master's funding as well. Things that we have spent in masters. Another one, um, is three fifty-one, which is before and after, before and after school care, a lot of that, um, she, she didn't put anything in the original budget for, again, for revenue or expenditures, um, so I put it in there, and also, it of course is hi, even higher than it normally is because of the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar grant on top of the regular expenses. That grant, I didn't fail to mention, is for this year and for next year. So that would bring us down to the bottom, which is what people really care about, right? Uh, projected to decrease the fund balance by a little over six hundred thousand dollars, which is a difference of almost a million dollars from the original.
Yeah, originally we were one point six, now we're at six hundred and fifty-eight. I would say the goal is to make that zero or positive, so.
And some of that is from, you know, we didn't have all the Esters money, we're still figuring out the budget, um, for the Esters money, but some of it is being used for smaller class sizes, so that was a big chunk of, um, money that we were able to.
So one of the things, we've got probably this year, maybe another couple more years of grants and just, uh, funds coming in that we won't get.
One-time things, yes, next year, if that'll end once. Well, projected then.
So the eleven point one seven percent fund balance, probably realistically, we've got to look at that going down some if these grants are coming in.
Well, that's against expenditures, so it would actually, our ending fund, our ending, ending fund balance is actually higher, so it would, the percentage is probably skewed a little bit because of that.
And so when we calculate fund balance, we take the expenditures, uh, I'm sorry, the, the difference divided by the expenditures, and that number is three point, the thirty-five million, and it's inflated arbitrarily a little bit by the Esters money, by about a little over two million dollars, and also this, uh, stable, retirement stabilization by two point six million dollars, so it's really inflated by about four point six million of dollars of money we don't get to spend.
Right.
I guess we get to spend the Esters, but it's a revenue we wouldn't see in the future. But this, you know, this is our revised budget, we're open for, you know, questions people have at this point. Continue to work on it, it's not a done deal, and we, we have another revision for sure in June.
Yeah, it changes, I've, you know, I've already changed, you know, put notes that changed small things here and there, yeah.
And then, um, we did have common data last week, and so I will get with you as soon as I have, uh, numbers that are, we feel confident in, and I think I, I saw the initials, I felt good about them, I think they're in a good spot, but I want to make sure that our, our, especially our new people, how many persons, since I'm going to have to learn something else, and they were going to regret later, say, oh, oops. But I was happy to see that our budget committee and, you know, Don Berry, I think, uh, the other person typically on it is Jason, they were right on on student count, they always make me go more conservative than I want to be. Yeah, with two, two five nine oh to two six oh seven, you know, pretty, pretty close. Pretty close.
Good job.
Appreciate that.
All right, uh, we'll move on to the mid-year academic goal report.
Got that up on the screen, and again, uh, the only thing I'll preface is what, uh, Mrs. Williams will go through the report. The preface is that this is required, uh, by law, and it's the, actually the state, the state aid, school state aid law. When they put the budget in place, they said you will, uh, present a mid-year report, and so in February, in, in February, you'll present a mid-year report. So we are presenting the data that we have. You saw the numbers of kids that were absent in January, so the, another preface is that not every single student has taken the test yet, but many, many have, so.
Yeah. So, um, this report should look similar as far as the layout. We will pro, report both proficiency, which is where are they supposed to be relative to minority, and then growth. And our goals are specific to growth, but I will start and, um, just reiterate that proficiency is what should a third grader know and be able to do. However, young people come in at all, um, achievement levels, in kindergarten, in fifth, and so we are also paying attention to growth, and the status assessment does that also. So we'll start with proficiency. Um, this is all of our students, A eights. Um, our NWA, which is a benchmark assessment, we administer three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. We did extend our deadline, um, because of the high number of quarantines, um, so we did extend it to the end of this month, but being in line with, um, state legislation, they are going to report now, and then again, we'll just give, I'm not going to do a full report, I'll just give you an updated report in March, and then if you have questions against it, we'll bring them to me in March for. Um, slightly down, all students, so if you look, it's NWA, reading, math, and then mid-year, um, proficiency is reported for both. It, it did decline slightly. She's woven, what is this, right? Pretty flat as you look at, so these are the subgroups we report, um, with assessments of proficiency, both at state as well as our benchmark. We do, um, our special education population, so it's a ninety, the English learners, if it's lower than a certain number, we don't give that data, because then in isolation, you know, it would be a FERBA, uh, you would say, oh, well, must be Johnny.
Is it usually ten or less, or is it?
It, um, for reporting, ten or less, um.
Students.
Um, and then we're also, so it's not mandated that we report email and mail, but we do report it, so I'm not going to go into the details of that. Pretty flat, right in the thirty percent, uh, proficient. Keep moving to our, um, race and ethnicity, that is also broken down, so there again, the black is, um, too small.
But if we have that data, we can start presenting it publicly.
Correct. Yes, and we do, we respond to it, so like, Karen Straubek is our EL teacher, so she is monitoring it as, in, in partnering with teachers to, to meet those good needs. Um, if, if you see below there, it says, like, compared to M step, what NWA does, it, it is projected, if we were to take the M step, this is, um, um, the projected number of percent that would be proficient, so it kind of gives us insight. Uh, those are not numbers we want to see clearly, only twenty-three percent, um, so that, that is the equivalent to weighing in, you have to look at what are we doing, what are you, what are we doing strategically in instruction? And that's what our teachers are doing, that's part of the PLC process, that exchange, where grade level teams are looking at if they have, let's say, teacher A has high number of proficiency of certain learning target or standard, they can share with the group and, and gain expertise. And so that's what we're really trying to capitalize, that's why we brought Riverside in, to see how they are doing that work. Um, I once again want to lift up the Riverside team, because they came on their own accord at five o'clock at night to help us, and we have teams going there to find out the structures and strategies that they're using. Okay, keep moving, I want to, those are the subgroups, we're going to move to the grid, so if you can go down.
Remote learners, interesting.
Yeah, very few remote learners migrate, so, yes.
Here's the goals.
These are the goals, so, um, the middle year and the end of the year is the same, it's that a minimum of eighty-five percent of our students, J eight, will meet expected growth. So how that's set up, NWA, um, they look at projections, so for second graders, that scored a certain RIT score, what are they projected to score? And, um, they basically have a target score, and then they give us a report of who met, by student, who met their, um, growth target. Our teachers have access to several reports, um, that they can use, that show them specifically by RIT score, what are the, what's the learning that they need to know and be able to do. Our parents will receive at conferences, it's called a family report, it shows the growth, um, for our students in math and reading, um, and so those, those are being included at the buildings, conferences will start this week. Um, this right here shows by grade, so we have two hundred and twenty-nine students, um, ninety-two percent are tested. We're right in the nineties, so we are really close, I don't anticipate, um, the numbers of proficiency or, or growth to grow real high, but, um, if you take a look at reading, we currently have in kindergarten fifty-two percent needing or exceeding their growth goal, and so we're shy about a little over thirty percent, so we have a lot of work to do. Math is even, um, lower than that, so we're about forty, we are forty-five percent off our target. So as you scroll through there, we're, we're ranging anywhere from the thirty-five to fifty, a little higher in third, when we get into secondary, um, it is higher, so fifty-seven percent of our fifth graders in reading have currently met their growth goal, fifty-six in sixth grade. Fifty-six in sixth grade, fifty percent, and then math, pretty similar with the exception of mid-grade math. It should be noted, we are reviewing two new resources for our middle school math, I believe I mentioned that in previous reports. Our teachers have, we extended a pilot, we have middle school math, the new BOSS. They're both research-based mathematical programs, and there's a lot of criteria that we're reviewing those. So then again, we have the subgroups, we've reported out some of these. In our NWA, some of our subgroups, like our free and reduced lunch and our students with NIP, those programs were not in there, so the reports weren't running. And so Mr. Maynard has, he's pulled that data in, so we'll have some of that data that's not here in our March report.
How was the eighty-five percent growth target established? Who does that, and how was this established?
So in an MTSS model, when we are aligning, when we're fully functioning, meeting individual students' needs, eighty-five percent of our students, that's a target mark of a highly functioning MTSS, so we went with that because, so it's a lofty goal, but ideally, we want a hundred percent to be proficient in.
No, I just, again, it is, it, it feels feels like, we should have lofty goals, but at the same time, are we?
You're wondering if it should be.
How could we, how could we even, if we're not even getting close to that, and that, that sometimes can be more motivating than positive if you have goals you can't meet, I mean.
So we've had conversations on both ends, and we can, you know, certainly revisit that. Some type is a percentage increase, so like, we'll have a percentage increase of proficiency or growth.
I mean, I mean, if your current performance is here, you know, is that, you know, you set annual targets, like inch to the, to the eighty-five, I don't, I don't know, I just, you know, but I see eighty-five percent target, and, and we're delivering at fifty. I just, again, that might, that might break behaviors, we don't want to be comparative.
So when we talk about proficiency at eighty-five percent, is that, is eighty-five proficient on that given test?
Are you talking growth, or are you talking proficiency?
Proficiency versus?
Proficiency is on this given test.
Okay.
Which is our NWA.
So that's not weighted versus like any other, where we stand in the state versus anybody else, or the county or?
The state test would be given in the spring. And so NWA is the, of the assessment, bunch of assessments we've looked at, it's a pretty good predictor of, pretty good assessment language, but it, it has been consistent in projecting what our students would probably report.
Okay, so I think I didn't ask, ask the question rightly. What I'm trying to figure out is, is that, is this based on however else is doing, or is this just eighty-five percent proficient of that test? Might ask it right.
Proficiency is, is on nationally norm.
Yes.
Everybody in the nation.
Okay, yes, all right, so.
Everybody has the same, like, if the nation's for.
This is state or national?
So then.
For proficiency, or if it's individualized.
Then we, based on the nation, and we are kind of far out.
Yeah, and again, I'm just, you know, Barack will say, you know, you should always have the audacious goals to be the best and all that, but you have to establish more of a roadmap, roadmap that gets you from where you're at today to where you want to be.
Yeah, we, we definitely don't want, our, like our teachers on the ground, we're looking and saying, oh, we're not meeting, we're, the goal is really lofty, so, you know, we know kids are behind because of pandemic and our working towards, you know, improvements. But we want to ensure our teachers understand that they, we know they're working hard, they're doing lots of great things, and are moving, and are moving kids in the right direction. And I think that's maybe what you're saying, is that we don't want to make it so that they're not gonna meet our goal and doing that way. So that's why, you know, we can take a hard look to say, how do we set our goals, you know, in the future, but we do want to be lofty, for sure.
Yeah, and I think from a business end, it's, it's financial and it's things, these are people's lives, and so that generate, I mean, I we have been on both sides and had conversations with people, when we had a lower, not in this district, people said, okay, which forty percent are you gonna let know, or not gonna?
Well, I think, again, I'm, I'm, I think you have aspirational goals, and I, I think what would be probably helpful for the staff is, again, what's that roadmap to get you, to get you there?
So in the past, the state had projections, they thought back before, but they had projections, and then they changed it, so it used to be set by state. But they keep changing that, so. Good question, though. Do you have any other questions?
All right, so move on to the high school HVAC financing.
Okay, now this is more on the main, so we've already went through the process, now we're in the position of paying for a process, and I want to be really clear about the resolution that I'm going to ask the board to pass tonight. This is to go out to bid for a, for actually several installment purchase agreements. For each of our contractors will have a separate purchase agreement, make sure I probably say something wrong, but you know, this is over my head. In our deliberation with the attorney's office, we are able to fund one point four, four, or one million four and forty-six thousand dollars on these purchase agreements, but we are unable to fund a fees, design fees, contingencies, allowances with this purchase agreement. So that is what I was talking about, we'd have to use district money, and district money in this case, we're gonna use a, we're projecting using a large chunk of this year's PIL, of about six hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately, and then we also would like to use about a hundred and thirty-five thousand of ESRS free. So far, in the information we received from our stakeholders, so far, it seems like HVAC is a, is a topic that they would like to fund in terms of stakeholders, so I think that is legitimate, and so if those two things combined, will take care of all the other fees that we have within this project. The one point four million I talked about to start with would be what we're talking about on this resolution. It would go out to bid, bids are due back on February twenty-eighth, and then we would accept a bid, I don't believe the board has to accept, is that true, or?
That's true.
So you would also be accepting the fact that we would take the low bidder for this project. There is some parameters in, in the resolution regarding the financing and the percentages of percentage rates for the interest rates that are set, try to find where I found it. Was it in our, right there, one point two five, did not exceed one point two five percent of the taxable valuation? Does that make sense? But I want you to know what you're passing, you are passing a document that will put this out to bid, but it will also allow us as an, as administration to sign the acceptance when this is, when this comes back with the lowest bidder. You saw the list of bidders that Shroom has suggested. Where do they get those, I don't think from their experiences with projects or something.
Yeah, they, we, just so you know, we don't have to do with any of them things, that's just their suggested things.
Questions?
Can I also add, this is for five years?
Oh, we have five years.
Five-year paybacks, and I believe it would be June two thousand twenty-three, it would be the first payment.
We did ask about paying back early, and we cannot pay back this, this purchase agreement early. And that, they said, when they, the attorney said, when they give these, it is set for the timeframe, and it's set, because we talked about that at our last meeting, can we?
There was an option too, but it would increase the percentage of what, and so we decided.
So I think that exactly.
Since we short, we had a shorter.
I, I, I thought the percent, having less, more of a higher percent was, was advantageous, is paying it off early. I don't think we'll, unless we want to really use a lot of PIL, you know, we're making some assumptions that the PIL is gonna be available, that we don't want to rely on the PIL, this is going to come out mostly of our general fund, or something like that. So paying is not aimed at basis.
So a lot of how much is, what do you think we'll pay them?
What do you think, one point four divided by five years, and then a little bit interest? So I think it's something we can handle.
I like the thought of getting it paid off in five years, so it doesn't encumber us for too long that way. At the same time.
I think it's in five percent, it's great, and then we go.
Approximately, yeah, that's what they approximate to start with, so that you can use some estimates.
Five percent's not, not hateful money as far as interest goes, so.
But I think the, the bigger picture is the project, I mean, we, this has been a, something that's on the backs of Harper Creek Community Schools for a long time. I think this group of people can, you know, solve an issue that's been hanging out there, and I think that's just as important. And it's the right time, and we can actually, you know, move forward with affordability of this.
Definitely. All right, we will move on to the O policies.
Okay, third reading, if the board wants me to go through them, again, I will, but typically on the third reading, and if there's specific questions, I am only recommending tonight that you pass a resolution that implements the fall Neola policies. We know we're going to Shroom policy, but for us to be up to speed within, with our legal parameters right now, we need to move forward with this until Shroom is in with.
Anybody would like to hear the policies right out loud again? Yeah, they are in board book.
We went through them, we went through them already once fully, and they're in board book, everybody's had a chance to take a look at them.
Mr. Ridger, is there anything you wanted to point out particularly in those policies?
Well, I, well, the board, I had talked about, I wanted you to pay close attention to the, the board meeting bylaws, so that everybody was aware of, you know, the public comment is from five to three minutes. The newest parameters I know of in the EXACT, I think everybody's very much aware of that now. Those are the, probably the two biggest things.
All right, last information discussion item, schools of choice fall two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, so annually, we have to approve of participating in schools of choice. I am anticipating and recommending that we move forward with schools of choice for this fall. I believe we should stay with what we've been doing, we've been targeted for first grade through twelfth grade, we've been opening kindergarten. Now, some of our kindergarten teachers, I know that may be watching this, this feed, and want to understand that we don't set, we don't try to fill the classrooms up. We, we have a number in mind of number of students in the classroom, and then we set how many teachers we need at that. This year, our kindergarten numbers are about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-one, that's a high, high number for this year. Hopefully, it'll stay that way, but typically it's more than two hundred range, two hundred to two hundred and five range. But the other grade levels, once we have our spring column, then we'll go through and set how many spaces we have available to have reasonable numbers of students in our classrooms. There was this maybe assumption, and, and maybe it did happen i- in some cases, where we tried to fill classrooms up to contractual levels. And I don't want to do that, but I do want to make sure we have enough students so that it maximizes the use within our district. And so I will go through with our, our new person who is doing people counting, along with Gail Brayman, who is, is still in the training mode, and decide how many per, and then also the enrollment period, the enrollment period for targeted is a month, one month. We typically hit the last kindergarten countdown, when we have the parents, when the kindergartners in May, and then go from there until about the end of June. And then for the kindergarten, we would be opening a longer period of time, so that would be from that same starting point until probably August first. And then that gives us the opportunity to make sure we have the staffing necessary to be successful. I don't think we'll be higher than two hundred and twenty-one kindergarten, we don't, I don't believe that. Some people left their kindergarten, kids home during COVID and waited a year, so I think that we won't see that affect again. So I'm, so I am just asking the board to say, yes, we're gonna do schools of choice, target first through twelfth grade, opening kindergarten, and then give the superintendent authority to pick the slots available and then the application period, based on best practice.
All right, thank you for that, move on to comments from the audience.
Harold, would you like to start us off?
Harold, I have one thirty-six hidden for us. I'm gonna totally change here. I'm very sad and disappointed by our reading levels by the mid-year report. I think the board knows exactly how my family feels about reading and how important that is to us, and this is not the school's fault. Reading happens at the home. And that's the critical part, but it's reflection on, on the school based off the numbers, but reading happens at home. And that's gonna be a change that has to be implemented to get reading done at home. Second, March first is quickly approaching, that is the deadline for the Battle Creek Community Foundation scholarship applications. I would hope and pray that we can give one more final push these last two weeks to get as many applications in. The numbers so far, I tried to get very Dave scholarship numbers, but they won't give it to me because I'm not on the committee yet, but mine are not very hot. So I'm asking for, if we can do something with the high school seniors to get that implemented. Last part, three weeks ago, you guys met, you did the superintendent evaluation. I'm sorry, I was not able to attend, I was recovering from COVID and that stuff, so I do want to take a couple minutes to talk about that. The last two years have been, for a simple way to put it, have been hell. I don't know how many of you have physically looked into the eyes of our teachers, our staff, our aides, and Rob, and seen the stress that has taken on by these individuals. I don't know how many times I heard tonight, our teachers are doing a great job, they're doing phenomenal, look what they've done, look at this, look at that. So contract times are coming up, and then Rob's got the same thing, and I hear grapevine park, usually it's one to three percent. I came from a company whose CEO said, to be the best, you have to hire the best. To hire the best, you have to pay the best, to retain the best, you have to reward the best. I think it's time that we step up and we reward Rob, our staff, our teachers, and our aides in this critical time that's taken place over the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Olson.
Hello, my name is Steve Olson, I live at one eight, two one one, nine and a half mile road. Just here, you know, continue to hear rumbling about the music program, came to talk to you folks about it before. Appreciate what we did here back in November, I thought we were starting off with the Music Matters Community conversation. Notes came out on that, were quickly recalled, nothing has come of it since, till we've seen, so just would hope that we could start with that and get that break kicked off again. Had a lot of hope, and I think, you know, would have hoped we had some more support, but I think that was just planting a seed. We need to continue to plant those seeds, get our music program back to where it was in the greatness of the community, and I know we've talked about that before. You know, starting with the middle schools, and getting the kids in there and seeing it, and we're probably seeing a low turnout in the, signing up and stuff. You know, COVID has been horrible in not only other areas, but in music programs, you know, it's really hard to do that in a remote environment. Witnessed it in my, myself, my home with my son, and with other student friends of his. But I just hope if, you know, we can continue to reignite that Music Matters Community conversation, thought that was a good seed to start with that, and just really want to see that we can continue to invest in our students, not only in sports and everything, we've even heard some discussion about tonight, but the importance of the music program and keeping that going, which is really important for these kids, to keep that developed. Appreciate the board and all the work that you do, but again, the music program is very, very important for our kids in the school. We just have to see that keep going, and I'm more than happy to help out when we can, and just continue driving this.
Thank you. Move on to action, we'll start with the revised two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Seeking a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education adopt the revised two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget as reviewed and recommended by the central administration.
Been moved by Mr. Myers, supported by Mr. Barry Smith, to be at possession. Hearing senior, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith is absent, Mr. Martin is absent, Dr. Borders? Mrs. Alward, yes, Mr. Bass?
I go yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes five zero. All right, I'll move on to the high school HVAC financing. All right, I'll move on to the high school HVAC financing.
Seeking a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve a five-year installment purchase agreement to fund one million four hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars of the high school HVAC project.
So, this one.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Barry Smith, supported by Dr. Borders, do we have discussion? Hearing in Seana, please call the board.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith is absent, Mr. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Borders.
Yes.
Mrs. Alworth, I vote yes, Mr. Martin is absent, Mr. Buss.
I vote yes.
We will need some signatures, Acting Secretary and the other one, Treasurer, if you have any.
Who was the acting secretary?
I think Treasurer is also on the line, one of the factors. Just make sure you all leave before we sign, we're going to get in tomorrow.
All right, move on to our third action item, Neola policies.
Seeking a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve a following two thousand twenty-one Neola Fall Policy Update as discussed and reviewed.
The board.
Been moved by Dr. Borders, supported by Mr. Barry Smith, do we have discussion? Hearing in Seana, please call the board.
Dr. Borders.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Jason Smith is absent, Mr. Martin is absent, Mrs. Alworth, I vote yes, Mr. Myers.
Yes.
And Mr. Buss.
I vote yes. Motion carries five zero. And our last action item, schools of choice fall two thousand twenty-two.
Seeking a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education authorize the district to participate in schools of choice, section one zero five, for the first semester of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, conditionally allowing targeted number of openings in grade levels. Further, the board delegates the superintendent the authority to determine the number of grade level openings and application time.
The board.
Been moved by Mr. Myers, supported by Mr. Barry Smith, do we have discussion?
Again, kindergarten is open, the other one, they're targeted for first through twelfth grade, and kindergarten, so that is clear. It's really hard to predict kindergarten openings.
Do we need to reread it, or just?
As we're reading.
Just reread.
We're ready for a book.
Discussion, further discussion. Please call the board.
Dr. Borders.
Yes.
Mrs. Alworth, I vote yes, Mr. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Martin is absent, Mr. Jason Smith is absent, Mr. Buss.
I vote yes. And motion carries five zero. And as usual, I will reach out to each board member, they'll be at text and email as far as the next meeting goes.
Just a quick comment, it's kind of related to next meeting, but I wanted to commend Mrs. Williams, I, I take part in the district improvement committee meetings, and I think you heard Mrs. Williams mention the representative we had from Riverside, which was really, really great after the meeting, and I, I'm assuming in the future updates, we'll get, I think it's great that you're, we're having people go work with them and get help from our neighbors, and I think, I just thought it was a great time, so I'm looking forward to hearing how that goes. Thank you.
I like the thought of collaboration a lot, yes, that's super. All right, meeting adjourned at eight fifty-nine PM.